Morning, everyone. Everyone can hear me, I'm sure. Wow. Okay, so we're going to call this meeting to order the 28th of June at 8:34 a.m. And we will open up by saying that if anyone's here for public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the deists, begin by stating their name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. We are on, and we're going to start with our overview of the planning workshop by Daniel.
Okay. Just a little bit of housekeeping to start off with. We do have new equipment, if you can tell. If you'll push the button when you need to speak, you'll see that your microphone will go green. That means that your microphone is live. If you press it again, if it's red, it means that it's on silent. So again, just want to make sure that everybody understood that. Very quickly, the overview of the, this workshop, my portion will be kind of brief. Basically, what we'll be doing, we'll be starting off with Tina discussing the financial update, and she'll be going over the revenues and expenditures, as we said currently, and also the American Rescue Plan. We have some discussion that needs to be had specific to that, as far as monies we'll be receiving and how those monies may be distributed. We'll move on to the capital improvement priorities. Tina, if you'll notice, she has put out for all of you all the capital improvement plan, which has all the different projects listed on there. So as we get toward the end...
Mostly unfunded.
Mostly, actually, yeah, the majority of those are unfunded. But again, as we get toward the end of the budget, this workshop, you can take a look at any of those items to see if there's anything that we may want to reprioritize or include in the priorities or whatever. So we'll move on to item four. We'll have staff discuss and give us all an update on the top three strategic priorities that we've had, actually, for the past four years. I think this is something that City Council has realized are very important projects for us, and we want to make sure we continue those priorities. But again, we'll have a little bit further discussion about that here toward the end of this workshop. And that's a portion right there. Item number five is establishing and confirming priorities for 2021 and 2022. Moving on to the financial update portion of it, really, it's just really important for us to know that we do have challenges and opportunities before we start our planning process. We do this every year before our budget workshops to kind of form a basis for what it is that we should be planning for, what we should be actually financing in and investing in, where the money should be spent. So it's really, again, imperative that we look at this and determine what exactly it is that we want to put our monies towards. We do have limited resources, so we do have different projects that compete against each other, so we want to look at those projects that we can leverage and prioritize for the greater benefit for the federal community. Next item. We'd be, as I mentioned a while ago, the three top priorities that we've had for the past four years has been infrastructure, which includes drainage, streets, and water, wastewater. You know, we'll have some really good updates on that from Shane and Allison here in just a little bit. Economic development, you'll also notice public safety. Infrastructure and public safety are those items that have cost, that do cost city money. These are expenditure-driven, so there's a lot of money that's actually dedicated toward those areas. And economic development has always been the area where we know that we want to concentrate our efforts to make sure that we can bring in those monies that will help pay for the infrastructure and public safety. The goal for the past probably over a decade now has been to leave the property tax rate where it is right now, and it's been at .776 now for over probably 13 years now. So that's something that the City Council in the past has always concentrated on. Hey, let's focus on economic development, let's build that economic base, which will help pay for the expenditures that we have upcoming. And that is just my quick overview of what you can expect. I'll have Tina go ahead and come up right now and do her presentation on her section. Tina? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Most of this financial information is pretty self-explanatory, so I won't go into detail on what's on the slides, but I will say that we did budget at a 98% collection rate for property tax, just over $41 million, with almost $5 million of that going to debt service and the remainder going to maintenance and operations. That represented a 3.9% increase in property tax revenue over the preceding year.
How much was new property versus existing property?
New improvements were up $58 million. And I don't know if we have the existing property number. Do you have that, Kimberly? So that would be new property valuations were up $58 million, and Kimberly will look up the existing properties, how much those valuations were up for that year. I'll move on, and we'll get that number for you, Mayor.
Yeah, do we have it broken out by commercial, industrial, and residential?
Not in this presentation, but we have looked at that recently, and so we could get you that information, definitely. So this is just the chart representing that property tax revenue and the growth entailed there. Oops, pardon me.
So why is there such a big jump in '21?
That moved from just under $35 million to just over $36 million. So it represents a $1 million increase, which is that 3.9% that I showed you earlier. I think it was about $1.25 million that it was up. Yeah. Sales tax revenue, of course, we've seen the annual average trending upward. As of June, we were over budget for revenue by $2.2 million. We did allocate just over $400,000 of that for the JEXA payment for the ancillary charges, pardon me, leaving an amount available of $1.8 million year-to-date. With our projection at year-end, we're expecting about $21.3 million, with leaving an amount available of just over $2.5 million.
Have we gotten very far along on negotiating those ancillary expenses that were unforecasted and unplanned?
I have submitted a request to FEMA for assistance, and they are still reviewing it. We've had some back and forth, and I've made some explanations, and waiting on a response from them at this point.
Have we reviewed the contract with our company to make sure that as we go forward, we're not going to end up with another one of these problems down the road?
I have reviewed the contract, and these are kind of unexpected charges that were due to the unique situation with the winter storm. If we have another situation that comes up like that, these charges are written into every energy contract that you receive. So it would be possible to have these kind of charges again, although now that we've had an event like this, we kind of anticipate that there's at least a possibility, whereas before we didn't.
Okay. Again, the chart just representing the growth in sales tax revenue, showing just over $20 million in fiscal year '20 compared with our projection of $21.3 million for fiscal year 2021. And this chart represents the month-over-month increases, just for a graphic picture of that growth. And now we'll move on to general fund revenue and expenditures, and where we are year-to-date with those. You can see property tax is at 97% year-to-date. That's what we would expect at this point in time throughout the year. We received most of those payments by the end of January, and so by this point in the year, we'd expect to be pretty close to 100%. Sales tax at 77% compared with 67% of the year having been elapsed as of May 31st, just to clarify what you're comparing that with. Alcohol and bingo tax is at 63% for revenue. Franchise tax at 59%, and then charges for service and miscellaneous, both at 66%. And moving on to expenditures, personnel at 66%, O&M at 64%, capital expenditures at 14%, and transfers at 67%.
Why is capital so low?
Capital would, usually in the general fund, this line represents technology capital, like computers, things like that. So it just, I guess, just departments are not using those funds for that purpose this year. So far, yeah. Thank you.
What's the projection, then? Because if you're only at 14% now, are we going to wake up in three months and find it at 98%? I mean, there's got to be a plan there.
Because that expenditure has been approved through the budget process. The departments are authorized to use those funds by year-end if they need to do so.
Mayor, I believe there's definitely mindfulness, because we've been talking about this as well. As far as expenditure, the COVID situation we went past this year, I think a lot of the directors, from what I've been seeing, have been more mindful as far as what they should be spending on right now, what's most important to spend their money on. And that's probably what you're seeing a lot of that out there as far as that reduction.
I just know if you're only at 14% and you're 75% through the year, that if it hasn't been needed, probably isn't going to be needed, and it's certainly a place to save money unless there's something in there that is, oh, my gosh, we got to do it.
I agree.
And let's not just spend it because it's budgeted.
Yeah, correct.
Departments as well, is that they're very conservative, and they try to wait until the end of the year in case they have an emergency that's unplanned for, so that they have that money available for that emergency if it comes up.
What would be an example of that?
A computer crashing, you know, something like that, that you wouldn't expect to happen. All right. Any other questions on this slide? Okay, moving on. This is the general fund chart that shows the amount budgeted for property tax, sales tax, et cetera. And again, just pointing out that the amount that we budgeted, or the revenue for property tax, does not come up to the level of covering the cost of public safety, which is what it's intended to do. And so we have to depend on other revenue sources to supplement that service. And you'll see that property tax makes up almost 48% of our budget, followed by sales tax at almost 24% of the revenue budget. And then expenses by department, public safety makes up 55%, Public Works 13%, Public Services at 6%, and then other departmental services at 25.5%. And I think that's all I have as far as revenue and expenditures in our report on that, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Does anyone have a question? And we're going to continue with the same standard that we use during regular meetings. Please ask to be acknowledged if you have a question or comment you'd like to make. Continue.
Okay. Dana, I believe that takes us to our next agenda item?
Yes, ma'am, it does. So let's go ahead and move on then to...
Thank you.
And again, I already mentioned this, we do have a list of capital improvement priorities. You do have that up here at this point. We'll get to that a bit later on. What I want to do then is move on to the top three strategic priorities, and we'll kick this one off with the first item on there is going to be drainage. Shane, if you want to go ahead and speak on that topic.
Dana, I think the next slide that we're going to have come up will be the ARPA. Do you want to skip over that?
No, no, I tell you what, no, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me about that. I thought it was going to be part of the presentation anyway. So yes, go ahead and cover that first, and then we'll get to Shane.
Okay, great. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act. Most of you are aware that the city will receive $16.6 million from that act. We have already received half of that amount, just over $8 million. We have not yet budgeted it because we waited for this discussion with council to see what your direction would be on budgeting and expending those funds. The remaining 50% will be received in one year. That's part of the act and part of the plan as it was presented. Costs can be incurred by December 31st of 2024, but they must be expended by December 31st of 2026. And there are some limitations on the uses of that funding, and here are the ways that it can be spent for your review. And then I think this kind of leads into a good discussion on capital expenditures and into what Shane and Allison will present.
Well, I know that Shane's up next, but I was in a MPO meeting a week ago Thursday, and one of the big issues that Shane brought up is we've got an eight-point, I think, $8 million drainage problem on College Hills where there's no source of funding. And as you all know, College Hills has been one of those streets that we know is high priority. So I'm going to start off by saying I think we need to take the $8 million and put it towards Shane's College Hills drainage problem, because he can't get started on the rest of College Hills until we take care of that drainage problem. So I'm going to recommend that in this conversation, we consider taking that $8 million and putting it towards what, in my mind, is one of the biggest priorities we have, College Hills, and can't start it till we solve the drainage problems.
Yes, ma'am, and drainage is one of the stipulated areas where you can use these funds for infrastructure.
Any comments? Yeah. All right. I don't know that we, yes, go ahead. Would you go back a slide, please?
Yes, ma'am. And through all of the webinars and the training and the reading and research that I've done on the act, they are encouraging, infrastructure projects are also encouraging collaboration with other entities that have received funding, such as the county, and so that's another thing that we may consider as we move forward with planning to use the funds.
I really want to get started on College Hills, so, and I think, I don't know anyone on council right now who wouldn't say College Hills is a number-one priority. So unless there's objections from that, I suggest that we take a vote to support the... How much is that, Shane, dollar-wise?
The actual cost of the project itself is right at $8 million, I mean, just a few pennies shy of $8 million. With, by the time we put a 10% contingency on there, it's right at 8.8, or just under that. And so, but the actual project's $8 million, we put a 10% contingency, it'd be 8.8 million. And we're hoping we don't need the contingency, but, because we're doing quite a bit of homework, working with our other utilities, not just our utilities, but all the franchise utilities as well, to try to ensure that we have most of those moved out of the way. Now, of course, there's always surprises, there always can be surprises, but again, we feel pretty firm, firm in that number right now.
So what I would recommend is that we, at this point, make a motion for approval of those funds.
Ma'am, we don't really need a motion since this is just a discussion.
I know, I want to just go through it, though, and I don't mind if we have a motion, because we can still take a motion in support of this, even though it's a budget workshop, so that you can move forward on it.
As long as the motion's just for directions, there's no action on the council's agenda, so we would be in risk of violating the Open Meetings Act if we actually take formal actions. So really, just directions is what we're searching for.
All right, so let's put it on the next council meeting for firm vote on that. So we can discuss it today, but the other part of it is, is I think that what we also want to do is, in anticipation of the remaining funds being received, to put that in the general fund for future consideration for projects that we may or may not know what the expenses are at this point in time, because we do have until 2024, 2026 to make decisions on that money. But I want to obligate that money with support from council, and we should make a vote on that in the July meeting.
Yes, ma'am, I can bring that in the form of a budget amendment, and typically, when we receive, notice that we'll receive grant funds, we do go ahead and budget for the full amount, and we account for that in our intergovernmental fund, and so we can go ahead and bring that budget amendment for the full amount. And with that, we will set up a project code for College Hills and move that amount into the project.
And can we clarify one more time that $8 million, 8.8 with contingency, is just the drainage portion of College Hills, not the entire project? Can you say what the entire project is?
Correct. That is just, that is just the drainage, and that's just the drainage that's going to go from the loop to the Arroyo itself. We're still going to have issues with flooding at the Arroyo itself.
Right.
We do, and of course, I can get into this as we move on further into my presentation, a little bit when we start talking about drainage and the master drainage plan that we have going on right now. But the total College Hills project right now is going to be kind of that ballpark, 24, 25 million, kind of, for the total project.
Plus this $8 million.
No, this will include that.
Just to clarify.
Yes, this will include that, ma'am.
Okay.
And it is the next thereafter on the list?
Correct. And with this, we're already, we're, of course, we've been in the design phase of College Hills for going on almost a year now. And so we're, with this, we're going to be at 90, 95% design. We believe we'll have, with this funding source right here, we believe that we'll be ready to go to bid on College Hills in August.
Okay, thank you. With that, Shane, go ahead into your presentation. We got that taken care of. I hope that wasn't your first slide. Hope I didn't ruin your presentation.
We can still talk about other parts of the drainage.
Thank you, Tina.
Okay, with the, just to kind of give you a brief update, and we'll make this really quick, just to kind of go through, but progress for in the drainage, when we talk about drainage mitigation throughout the city, the Avenue P detention pond project, trying to alleviate and mitigate the flooding on Avenue P. We're at about 90%, 85, 90% right now. The groundwater issues over there are slowing them down, causing some issues, but they're actually constructing the actual dam portion of it right now, and the concrete and all of that. But again, still looking at a fall completion date on that project, so we should be complete, hopefully, by this fall with that project as well. East Angelo Draw at Bell Street, this was addressed, the low-water crossing there at East Angelo Draw on Bell Street was addressed with the reconstruction of Bell Street. So we have taken great strides on the East Angelo Draw issue, even though there's still quite a few issues along that area, but that one has been addressed. Trace Rios Crossing at South Concho Park Drive, again, mitigating the flooding, the backing up of water and the flooding of that area has been completed. That was an in-house project, as well as the East Angelo Draw Coke Street. That was an in-house project. Again, there's still some overtopping and some flooding issues, but a lot of that has been, we've opened up the waterways, or opened up the drainage underneath the street, and so a lot of that's been done, and that was an in-house project as well, too.
So would you say with the actions taken so far, that it, on Trace Rios and East Angelo Draw Coke Street, it resolves 90% of the flooding issues, or what would you say?
The Trace Rios one, again, we haven't seen that really large event that we had two or three years ago, where we really did see a lot of flooding in that neighborhood. We haven't seen an event of that magnitude yet. But we have, we have quadrupled the volume that can actually leave Trace Rios into the river, and so we believe that we're going to take a lot of that pressure that they've been seeing in the Trace Rios addition off of them with this project. East Angelo Draw, we believe we've opened up enough of the street that hopefully, from an emergency vehicle, it's kind of like the Foster Road issue that we have out there, that we raised, we raised the road up, we've opened up some drainage underneath the street, and that we believe that hopefully, from a, from a public safety aspect, that we've addressed those concerns. There's still some long-term issues in that whole East Angelo Draw area that we need to, that we still need to continue to work with. But again, as we talk about the master drainage plan, those are going to be some of the things that come up in the master drainage plan as we, as we continue to work our way through that as well.
Okay, Harry has a question for you, Shane.
I really have a comment, and that is Avenue P and East Angelo Draw, five years ago, were the greatest need from drainage in the community, and we've addressed that. We're going to move on to College Hills and a few other. We do want to say that the constituents in three and four really appreciate the work that we've done on these four items here, East Angelo Draw, Trace Rios, and Avenue P, because now they can see that these things are working. Now, we may not be 100%, but we are so close to taking care of some of the things that's been going on for 50 or 60 years. Certainly appreciate the help getting to that spot, and I know Lucy does, too.
Well, I want to make sure everyone understands we will never be at 100%, because we go from 16 inches of rain in three days to half of an inch of rain, and so the dynamics with that. But if we've corrected the majority of those issues through normal drainage, then I think we've done a great job.
Yes, ma'am, and that's the whole thing when we talk about, when we talk about drainage, you know, we're just, we're trying to mitigate it. I don't, again, we're never going to completely do away with it, but again, if we can, if we can make it manageable, then that's our goal at this point, is try to make things manageable, so.
Thanks, Harry.
And looking at the upcoming projects that we're working on right now, the completion of the new master drainage plan, and of course, the College Hills drainage that we discussed earlier, and some of those issues that we're dealing with there. Talking about the updated master drainage plan, we hope to be back in July with an update to council, kind of to get y'all's, to kind of present it to council and to get y'all's feedback on it, make sure that there's not something that we as staff have missed or we have, or there's something in the prioritization, how we've, you know, the scale in which we prioritize things, to make sure that everything that we've put forth, y'all are in concurrence with, and then we will get that, we will get that buttoned up and finalized, and hopefully have a plan, a new, new plan for the city. We have, as you know, that the city's grown a lot in the last 20 years, 21 years now, since our last drainage plan that was there. And so as we've gone through and looked at it, we, you know, we have identified new areas of concern all across town, not just in any one where you've seen some growth, I mean, but actually new all across the entire city as well. And, and so some of the priorities have changed, looking across when we start looking at life safety and a lot of those other measures that we've been looking at, and of course, volumes of water that we're now seeing in certain areas that we weren't seeing 20 years ago, just due to, due to normal growth. When we start looking at the, at the funding on those, we're looking at, you know, in the 2000 plan, we were only able to address three of those in the original plan. In the top 25 projects in that 2020 plan, the estimated cost to mitigate those was $35 million. We're just looking at our top seven projects so far as we're working through this plan. That's kind of what the, the solutions that have been presented, those far, right now in 2021, just for the top seven projects, is about 39.7.
And those are drainage issues only, not street reconstruction with the drainage?
That is strictly drainage only. That's, and whether that's, we're looking at channelization, whether we're looking at detention-retention ponds, those type things for the mitigation efforts, those are where we're seeing the, that's where these dollars are going to, not necessarily streets. There may be some street work involved in some of those, where we're looking at either expanding the width or maybe looking at, there is one project, one really large project within those, that top seven right there, that actually does put drainage culverts underneath the roadway, and so that one is, that is a really high-dollar number.
But right now, with what we just had a discussion on and will vote in the next meeting, you would reduce that $35 million and that 39.7 million by the $8 million, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That will be, one of those projects is listed in the top seven of the 2021 project, so. But again, we're, again, and again, those are only the top seven. We're going to try to bring a top 10 list to the city within the new plan, and they were still working on the last three at this moment, and so we didn't have those numbers.
Maybe we ought to do the top five?
Do what, ma'am?
Maybe we should just do the top five?
Just limit the top five. Yes, ma'am. And again, we're going to, and we're going to bring them to, and we actually have identified up to 35, 35 major problem areas throughout the city. Now, not all of those are going to have solutions identified, just due to some of the nature of them. We're going to have some estimates on them, but not actually identified construction documents, basically, or preliminary construction documents.
Harry?
I guess I have a question. You show 57 from the 2000 plan. With all of the construction that we've been doing in the last five, 10 years, we're making sure that these neighborhoods and these commercial buildings are putting together their own drainage issues so they don't impact the city any greater. Is that correct?
Correct. With, when we created the, actually, one of our, in the stormwater plan that we created with the ordinances and all the things that we created back in 2010, in our new development processes, that, that was addressed at that point within those ordinance then, that any new construction, any new, when a developer plats new land, when we're getting ready to construct, new areas, is that they make sure that they contain any additional drainage that they have created by their development. And so if, that way, they are not running off any more water than what normally would run off in a natural, in its natural state.
So if we magically had enough money to take care of these other 54 drainage issues, the city should not have any future drainage issues? Is that a fair statement?
He does not want to answer that.
Yeah. It's one of those, that's a, that's a really, it's a really broad statement, yeah, but it would definitely, it would definitely help. There, I mean, I don't know that we're, because, you know, when we talk about these, and I would have to have one of the engineers here to talk to the design level, I can't remember if it's a, I think it's a 100-year, the storm event that they have, but if we have a thousand-year or something like that, there's always going to be the chance that we're going to have flooding and that it's not ever going to be, again, 100% solved. But as we move forward, if we did have all of our areas identified... But as we move forward, if we did have all of our areas identified, addressed, then again, during most rain events, the issues would go away or, well, or be highly manageable.
I don't know of any city that has a hundred percent. I mean, that's, I mean, let's be realistic.
Yeah, and it, they would, they would become manageable at that point, the, the events.
I think, I think citizens understand, citizens understand that you're never going to be able to fix everything, but if they have recurring issues with three and five inch rains, that's the ones that they want to see, see some help on. And I think that's where I'm coming from. If we can, we could solve these fifty-four, then future ones shouldn't be created by, by construction of new commercial buildings or residential areas. Is, is that correct?
It, that's it. I mean, we're, they should be addressed moving forward. The majority of those issues should be addressed in, in new developments moving forward.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Continue.
Uh, going on to streets, um, this brief history, you know, back in twenty fifteen, we did have the food growth study completed, which kind of outlined our basis moving forward for not only, uh, not only for our, our annual maintenance, but also for our, our rehab rehabilitation process and which council at that time authorized the eighty million dollars over ten years, uh, for us to start looking at that rehabilitation, reconstruction process throughout town. Um, we are twenty, currently twenty-twenty-one, uh, is the third year, uh, out of, uh, out of our five, five bond, or, uh, third out of the five bond issues, uh, over that ten year period. And so, uh, working our way through those very well. Of course, College Hills, Southwest, all these being one of those, uh, that are going through this process. Now, uh, for our, uh, annual maintenance budget, uh, we normally, uh, apply about three point five million for seal coating and preservation and, uh, we save about five hundred thousand back for cracked ceiling, pothole repair and small, uh, small in-house reconstruction or construction projects that we have in-house, alleys, those type things is what we utilize those funds for. Uh, just kind of go through where we are, uh, kind of in our current standing with it, with our rehabilitation reconstruction projects. Our completed projects are MLK, the stretch of Southland there by the Sams and the, the Walmart, uh, College Hills, the Valley View and West Concho Avenue, those have all been completed. We have active projects right now of Bell Street, which we're at currently about eighty-five to ninety percent complete there. Uh, we actually have it, uh, actually, uh, concrete's all the way down, all the way from the river, all the way through on the west side of Bell. Uh, so now we're working from Harris back down to the river on the east side and, uh, once that is complete, along with the sidewalk installation there, that project will wrap up and that will be complete. Um, I don't know if you've been down it or not, but it is, it's, it's actually pleasant to drive down now.
People comp, people talk about it all the time in terms of how great a new street is.
Yeah, that's, uh, it's, 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 it's actually pleasurable to drive down Bell Street now. So I, I've, uh, I've, being that our main shop and facilities are over there off of Bell Street and St. Anne, I drive down it quite often and it's, you know, I'm, I've even noticed how nice it is, so. Uh, going on to Southwest Boulevard, Southwest, we are at a probably about seventy percent completion there. We have all of the mill and overlay portion of that project completed. Uh, they're working on some sidewalk and some issues down there around the railroad track, railroad crossing, uh, close, close to the school. Uh, we are, they're starting the, um, the reconstruction of Southland and the Southwest, um, intersection there and then they are underway with the, uh, utility work right there in, at the draw itself, right by there by the McDonald's. They are doing the utility work as we speak.
And I would assume that was one of the big drainage issues.
That is one of our drainage issues. Uh, and so we're going to, uh, now, again, that's part of the entire Royo Drainage System issue that we're going to, again, you'll see some more of those issues along that entire corridor, brought up in the master drainage plan. But again, that one specific flooding area, that one dangerous area right there at the McDonald's, uh, is being addressed. We are, uh, we're going to put two, uh, large concrete, uh, box culverts in there, uh, to help, uh, with the flow right through there. Uh, we are probably going to still see some issues in that area, but we are going to raise the street a couple of feet, so hopefully those will be very limited in the issues. We probably still see, our biggest choke point is going to be Loop Three Oh Six where the water goes under Loop Three Oh Six. So we will still, still have a choke point there, we'll still see water back up. But we shouldn't overtop the street near as bad, so we should be in a lot better shape there.
Let me back up to the completed projects on the twenty-seventeen Southland by Sams.
Yes, ma'am.
That is very heavily trafficked and so, um, I'm not sure what the game plan is when we attack it again, but I know that it's already been hugely impacted by all that traffic.
It, it has and the right turn lane right there next to the Stripes Convenience Store has, is just, yeah, we do have some groundwater issues in that area, which I think helped contribute to some of that, but the heavy turning movements and the heavy traffic loading right there, it, it has taken a toll already on that reconstructed. Uh, probably look as we, uh, kind of move into some of the other work in that area, we'll probably go back and have to go back in with a concrete, uh, mat in that area to, to hopefully firm that, at least that one, that one driveline, uh, firm it up and get it to where it like, it's going to hold up over time, so.
Yes, Harry. I mean, Tommy.
Go ahead.
Which one is on?
I, I, I know we've got some issues too beyond Sams, really on that little bridge there that, that is in the, I don't know, the drainage channel there that look, the seat, the street is sinking. Um, I think y'all had it marked at one point. It looks like now it may have stabilized, but is that part of something that you are going to address in the future?
There, there are some longer term plans, uh, not necessarily within our re, our current rehabilitation reconstruction program. There are some longer term plans that we have where we'd like to actually go in there and actually widen Southland on through just past the school, uh, to actually widen that area, uh, and actually reconstruct that portion as well. But again, that's out past our ten-year timeframe. Uh, it's not as high anywhere, high on that priority list right now.
Harry, did you have a comment? No. Okay, keep going.
Okay. Nope, no problem. Um, and then again, uh, that should, all of that, we're anticipating to have completed that whole section from the loop all the way back to Twin Mountain Drive. Hopefully, all of that will be a hundred percent, uh, by the time school starts back up, um, in late August, September. So, uh, hoping to get that wrapped up here pretty quick on that. And then the last portion of the Southwest Boulevard will be that area from where the Cavenders is there, uh, all the way through to in front of Tractor Supply where there's a drain there. That will all be re, completely reconstructed, full depth reconstruction through there. Uh, and then of course, active projects Chadburn Downtown, um, coming along very quickly with that project as well. Uh, a couple of small, uh, we have, well, it's not small, we do have one franchise utility, uh, that has had some issues with one of their structures right there at the corner of Tuig and, and Chadburn and still working with them to try to get that addressed as soon as we can.
Have they found the equipment that they need for that?
They, my, they're still a corporate trying to figure out exactly all the details and the funding and all of that to get that, to get that finalized and fixed. But, uh, we do have a, I think we have a conference call with one of their, uh, folks later on, uh, this week to hopefully help spur them along or if there's anything we can do to assist so we can get that, if we can get that poured, we can actually get Chadburn opened. Uh, we're starting to, to come down to the final, we're getting all the sidewalks completed, working on the, you know, working on some of the decorative things now along the roadway, getting the signalized, um, the signal lights back installed, back up and going. And so if we could just get that complete, we could have that whole, that whole corridor up, up and running and, and, and ready to go.
Cause that franchise thing has held up this project by weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of opening up that street.
Yes, ma'am. It has, as far as getting it opened up and getting everything, getting the flow and the traffic flow back in downtown, it sure has. Uh, but again, going to, trying to work through that and get that pushed along. Um, and then, so hopefully, uh, again, wrapping up the, the contractor visit with the contractor, we're hoping to have that finalized by October, uh, so we can have the final walkthroughs with Tech Dot, uh, and, and get all that finalized. Um, hopefully, again, um, mid to late fall, um, early winter at the latest, so, uh, get that completely off the books.
And that includes the streetlights?
That, that includes street lighting and everything, yes, ma'am. That includes the whole thing. Uh, upcoming, uh, North Chadburn, uh, from Seventh Street to Forty-third, uh, which is going to be, uh, again, um, rehabilitation, mill and overlay, uh, in with full depth reconstruction in certain areas. Uh, of course, College Hills, again, uh, with, with, uh, the assistance for the drainage funding that, uh, that, that we're, that council's going to allow us to have, we're going to be able to, again, let that, uh, for bid in August, we believe. Well, design's just about complete, uh, just waiting on the funding on that one. We have Howard Street, which has just begun, uh, its design phase, as well as Edmund Glenn and Twenty-Ninth, uh, which will go all the way from sixty-seven all the way back around to Chadburn Street as well. A really large stretch of road that way, we're going to, that we're going to be able to get to tackle there. And then of course, Real Concho Drive, uh, we're at a hundred percent design on it, hope to have that ready to go to bid, um, actually this month and, or in July, um, as, as well as the, the Seventh to Forty-third, we hope to actually have, uh, out on the streets ready for bid this month as well, too. So, uh, the, and the Real Concho Drive is going to be, uh, an FDR process, which is a little different process for us. Uh, we're hoping that basically, you know, we pretty much have good curb and gutter along that area, we just have lost the, the roadway and the road base itself. And so we're hoping with this new process that we can actually, uh, see some increased, um, efficiencies and, and savings by going through this process, uh, and, and try to get some of these full depth rehabilitative processes, uh, you know, a little, little more cost effective and, and maybe make our dollars move a little further down the road.
The, there have been lots of positive comments on the Southwest Boulevard process and the treatment that was put down and the group that had that contract, how courteous and supportive they were for the neighborhoods and so a lot of positives on that project.
Yep, and, you know, and we, we look at those O and M's and, and that's the HA5 process that we're, that we're putting down. And those are the areas on, where, that we're placing, um, the HA5 where we can. It's, it's not, again, every street in town is not going to be a viable candidate for the HA5 process, but where we can, uh, we, we really like that product. Uh, and the company that we're working with, Andel Construction, on applying that product, uh, very professional, they have, they have their, their system down, uh, very well. And so, uh, they're great to work with, um, and they do have great customer service, so, uh, they've been, they have been a pleasure to work with. Uh, just moving on, we're looking, uh, again.
Can I ask a question before?
Lake, go ahead.
Sure, sure. Um, going back to College Hills, what we have budgeted, you told us just a second ago, it's about a twenty-four to twenty-five million dollar project. What type of reconstruction are we looking at? Concrete, asphalt, what is budgeted?
Currently, what is budgeted, well, what we're, the, the, where we're at right now, we're probably going to have two, we're probably going to look at two, two bids, a, a base bid and then an alternative. The base bid is going to be a fairly robust, uh, asphalt.
Kind of like what we did with Bell Street?
Yeah, it's going to be, but it's, right now, our base bid is going to be a fairly robust asphalt where we're actually putting down, um.
So not concrete, is the point?
Not concrete, uh, two different types of asphalt we're looking at, um, a, a lower layer and then an upper layer, um, on two different types of asphalt there. But we are going to look at also an alt, probably looking at an alternative bid of RCC, roller compacted concrete as well, too.
Okay. In the CIP, the reconstruction of College Hills from Loop Three Oh Six to Avenue N, you have a total price of twenty-one, three hundred thirty-one, seven eighty-three. The difference in price there is, is that from the outdated pricing up to date of what today's pricings are?
Correct, correct.
So we've increased about three million dollars so far?
Yeah, we're, our, and unfortunately, but every time that we, we send a project out for bid, the, the numbers just keep coming back higher and higher and higher and actually, um, our, and we believe that, in, the, the company that we're using to design College Hills has used, utilized our latest bids, uh, for their pricing structure on that, so, um, again, they just, we just keep going up and I think they've even added, uh, I believe they've even added some, uh, escalators to that, to that as well, to our bid pricing as well.
So the twenty-one million, that's more, is that the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty number or?
Yeah, that's going to be probably incorporating, incorporating elements out of not only our Bell Street bid, uh, but also out of the, um, the Southwest bid as well, too.
Okay.
Yes, Harry?
Shane, um, we, when we made a decision five years ago, six years ago, however long ago it was, uh, on Bell Street, to go from eighteen to twenty-two million for concrete, that's probably one of the best decisions I was ever involved in. I'm wondering if when we look at some of these major streets in the city, if we, we should look at both asphalt and concrete cost. Ultimately, College Hills, and, and it's one of the worst streets in town right now, College Hills gets a lot of traffic. The same thing's happening, I mean, we go with, talk about North, North Chadburn, that gets a lot of traffic. We should look to see i- if there's benefits to looking at that increased cost now because in the long run, long after I'm gone, long after many people sitting up here are not in this positions anymore, those streets are still going to be there if we can use concrete. I, I would suggest that we look at both the cost of asphalt and concrete for these major streets. I'm not talking about residential areas, but I'm talking about the major streets. Avenue N, for example, you're going to do that next year, the year after? That gets a lot of traffic every day, so let's just consider, let's look at both of them.
Yes, sir, that's what, that's, that's what we're doing with the RCC, uh, the roller compacted concrete. It's, it's not the traditional, uh, concrete with the, with the rebar in the, in the concrete. It's not, it's not a traditional mat, but it, it is a, it is a, again, it's a concrete product that has a longer, a longer shelf life than our traditional asphalt product.
Just to make sure, cause that's a key point. Go ahead, Tom.
So Shane, just going back, you and I've had this one, but just so the people that are watching can, I think most important thing right now, we know North Chadburn's going to be fixed. It's not a, you know, we know it's going, it's going to be a win, so we need to work around what events are going to happen up there, which would be a February, April, make sure we don't, and I think you've alluded to that in there, but going back like Twenty-Ninth Street, um, coming all the way from sixty-seven back around to eighty-seven, there are parts of that road that are just fine. I mean, could go more years and there's parts of it near our intersections that are tough and I, and I will side with Harry on this and agree. I don't know if you can blend those construction projects to where you can get away with a specific type of surface, base material for one, then when you get to the intersections or within three to four hundred feet of those intersections, change those to a concrete. I'd certainly, I don't know if we have to do concrete on all of it, but I, I get the point and on Bell Street it does because of the traffic. But on Twenty-Ninth and certain things of Chadburn, those major intersections, it would, I think we'd be well served for twenty, thirty years ago, concrete, but there's other parts that can give out just fine on what we have. But anyway, we've had that discussion.
Yes, sir. Yep, we, and we do, we, uh, again, going back, if you look at the Southwest project, Southwest and Southland is all going back in concrete, um, and, and so we are blending those, uh, we are blending asphalt into the concrete. So, and we do, we, and we try to do that as we do, especially on those heavily traveled streets and those intersections, we definitely want to go back with concrete. That's, that's where the majority of our issues start are in the intersections and then start pushing their ways on down the street.
Well, and, and I looked at that on the, on Twenty-Ninth Street. I mean, you could literally go in there and make six little picks out of there and fix six spots and then leave something else. Should the budget or things get there, we need that. But anyway, we're good. Thanks, Shane.
In other words, we want to be creative?
Yep.
Get the roads done, get the streets done, but be creative in the process.
Yes, ma'am. I'm, uh, we, we look at every option we can to try to, uh, stretch our, stretch our dollars as far as we can, so, uh, cause again, dollars are hard to come by and, and we realize that, so.
Well, and I think the point that we all understand today is that in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, when the eighty million dollars was discussed, um, that, that eighty million dollars does not go as far as anticipated back in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. And so we want to make sure that as we do the projects, we give them as long of a life as possible, even though it might not fit into that eighty million, we'll need to address how we come up with additional funds, um, because things aren't the same price they were in twenty fifteen or sixteen or seventeen.
Correct.
Or eighteen or nineteen or twenty.
Yes, ma'am, and the, and the construction industry has definitely seen inflation rates that, that have outpaced the majority of the rest of, uh, of, of the processes out there, so. Uh, but just kind of looking at our current funding situation and Mary, you bring up a good point, you know, kind of thinking of, of some other things out there. I know our council has been steadfast in not, not trying to raise our property tax rates, uh, for a long, long time now. And, and so as we're looking, we're, you know, we're in, we're in our third of five allocations through our rehabilitation process, um, you know, we've, we've, we're, we're, we're getting to the point in our O and M budget that we're going to need, start needing to see some increases there. increases there, and we still have, and of course drainage, we don't have any allocated funding for drainage within, within our standard operating budgets, and so, as we're looking, moving forward on, on, on things that we can look at to see what we can do to, that's out there, one, we don't wanna raise property taxes, because that has so many other issues with it when you start doing that, so what else is out there? What else can we do to help find funding to, to move our progress, to, to move our street, you know, our streets and our drainage and all the things that long, to, because the need is still out there. I mean, we're going to address our, our top arterials and, and collectors, but we still have tons and tons and tons of street work to do out there, so, one of the, one of the big questions we have out there is, is what are we gonna do? What some of the other cities are doing, and we'll go into this next, next slide here, and again, don't necessarily need any direction or anything from y'all today, but things we wanna throw out there for y'all to start thinking about, for ways, alternative ways that we can raise funding, to, to work on our, to keep using and working on our streets, and also maybe for some drainage as well, too. But other, other cities, Abilene, Colleen College Station, there, and there's many, many more throughout the state, that have instituted street use fees, which is basically, a lot of them are basically, it's, it's based on trip generation. You know, a house, a, a typical house will generate so many trips per day, certain different businesses generate so many trips per day, and you base a fee based on trip generations to those businesses or those households, and whether that's, you know, one or $2 a month, or up to, you know, whatever it is, but that's how they kinda base those, and, and you can kinda see what these other cities, based on, based on this, this style of street use fee, are generating for their O&amp;M budgets every year. And again, and it's a fee-based, it's not a, it's not, it's not tied to property taxes or anything else, it's strictly a fee. And so, it's one of those things that you can, again, it's, you, you know, from year to year, it can, it can go up, it can go down, it can do, it, you can manage it the way the city needs to manage it at that point. And again, drainage-based fees, one of the things that we look at right now, you know, we're coming up with the Master Drainage Plan, of course, we had one sitting on the shelf for 20 years, and, and only were able to tackle three projects, just, you know, scraping, scraping dollars out of nowhere, but when we start looking at drainage mitigation as a whole, things that we can do, and, and the, Texas Legislature has also put, started to put more emphasis on this, we have the federal government starting to put more emphasis on this, and even the Texas Water Development Board has a lot of grants out there right now to help with drainage mitigation, they're matching grant funds. And so, again, we still don't have any funding source to actually match these grants that, that are possibly out there and available, so, something to look at would be to-
All right, so, let's stop with that a minute, okay? So, you're saying there are lots of grants out there?
There, there, there have been, and we've actually looked at, we've actually looked at some out there through the Texas Water Development Board and things like that, they're matching grants, and of course, it depends on how your project rates amongst everybody else in the state of Texas, but again, there, there are starting within the last, well, actually, the last two years is when we've really started seeing an influx of, of monies coming from state and federal sources for grant funding, to start addressing drainage mitigation issues.
Well, I think we should be applying for all of those, because if it's an issue of coming up with matching funds, we should find the funds, 'cause that's a small investment compared to the, what the grant-
Yes, ma'am.
...dollars are gonna be, and we shouldn't miss any of those opportunities, because as you say here, we don't have a drainage fund, we don't have-
Yes, ma'am.
-a structure to pay for drainage, so if there are grants, let's get applied for, we will figure out our matching portion, but to miss out on that would be a major mistake.
Yes, ma'am, no, and, and we did, we, we actually, there was a, there were some funds last year that came available through the Texas Water Development Board, and we put our name in the hat, of course, where our projects, unfortunately, were not ranked high enough within the state to, to actually make the application, but again, we, you know, but those are the things that we're starting to throw our hat, you know, throw our name in the hat for, and try to do, and there's, and they're, keep coming out with more and more all the time. And as our Master Drainage Plan is finalized, that will also help add weight to our ability to go out and, and get these grant, grant funds for this, and again-
Well, the biggest problem we've had is called Houston, Texas, because almost all of the drainage grants have gone towards taking care of the flooding issues in Houston, Texas, so we're up against a big monster, because everyone I've looked at ends up going to Houston.
Yes, ma'am, and, and they do, they, they, they generate a, a large portion of where those grant funds go to, so. But again, these are just ideas for y'all to think, for y'all as council to think about for alternative, alternative funding sources, again, these are fees, and so, again, they can be adjusted as necessary, as council sees fit, or done away with, or however, however y'all wanted to build a program, but again, there are programs out there like this, and again, we just wanted to throw this out there to y'all, just, again, just trying to generate some ideas, try to generate some thought on possible ways that we can, that we can find additional dollars to, to work, work through these ongoing issues that we're gonna see and have in the upcoming years.
And speaking to the Abilene mayor, I know that they have been very pleased with their street use fee, I'm not sure how it's structured, but they did that first, and now they're gonna go out for a big bond, so ours is sort of the reverse, we've already done the bonding, and, and then we're looking at what else we might do, but a lot of cities are going out this fall season for bonding projects, which we're already in the process of doing, so we're ahead of the other cities in terms of commitment to our street project, but we know it doesn't cover all the needs that we have. And I think as a community, that the citizens have been very vocal about making sure we really address street issues as a huge priority, so we need to continue to talk and be creative about how we might approach it beyond the $80 million bond issue.
Mayor, and I do wanna point out as well, that Shane talked about the three and a half to four million dollars that we allocate per year, that's a pay-as-you-go for the, just for, to, to seal coat our streets, to make sure that we keep them maintained, a lot of these cities are behind the, the curve, well, actually, they're actually using some of these monies to cover the maintenance portion of it, so we actually are in a pretty good place on the maintenance part of it, though, so, but we-
I agree, I talked to a lot of mayors, and, and it's true, we're ahead of most of the cities. Go ahead, Tommy.
Shane, what specifically, or is, is that at the design of the, the city's respective council, what can those street use fees be used for?
The majority of them are being used for either, one, the, the maintenance portion of it, when we're actually talking about a chip, seal, or seal coat, but several of them are actually using them to go back in and use them for, you know, light rehabilitation work, some milliner overlay work, those type things. And again, we have been, me and my staff have been talking, along with Daniel DeSomic as well, too, about maybe taking on some more of these type processes in-house as well, too, from our standpoint, looking through those, and we've been running the numbers on a lot of these processes to try to see what, what our costs would be versus, you know, bidding some of these out on some of these smaller, on some of these smaller maintenance issues, where you can do some smaller milliner overlay work, things like that, in-house. Again, we wanna be very careful about what we do and how we do it, but again, we're putting the financials together to see what's feasible and what's not feasible, and so-
How do we dig into this a little deeper? And when do we dig into this a little deeper? Because we are going through a budget session, so we're going to need to make some decisions about what we do approach, and I know that most of the councils very solid on not raising property tax, and so, we know that that's not gonna be an option for conversation, but we also need to look at the options available for increased street work.
Yes, ma'am, I know that we do have a, a budget workshop coming up in July, I, I believe it's kind of some of the other funds, not just the general fund or, or enterprise funds, but some other issues, I think, maybe at that one, that staff could be prepared to bring back a lot more in-depth look at what these other cities are doing, and really have some really good examples, and, and talk through a lot of these more in-depth details about this process, and this, and, and how you, how you could go about applying this to the city, and we could bring that back at one of those workshops if that suits council.
Yes, Tommy.
Shane, are you gonna talk to us at some point? I know this is, this is veering off topic a little bit, but it's on streets nonetheless. Could street use fee be used for construction, brand-new construction of a street? And I know that, I know the city typically does not do that, but Larry and I share a street that I think we ought to seriously have a conversation about the city looking at constructing a portion. There's pent-up development opportunities that I think, we're talking about generating more taxes, that the developments would help generate, but we, we gotta talk about getting a street through. So, is that something that a street use fee could be used for, would be construction of a new street, if the council wanted to do that?
Well, Tommy, there's also another option, and it's some of the things that other cities do, for example, they put in the new street, and then as development happens, then we charge that development with the cost of that street work, because typically, they would have been expected to spend that mu- that money, and so-
I was wondering maybe if we could partner with some of the developers to incent them to go ahead with the development, so, that's kinda where I was headed with that, but is that something that you're going to talk about at some point, or not?
We will, and, and I believe I know exactly which streets you're talking about, Tommy, and that's something we were, the staff has been looking at, probably planning on bringing back to council, for, for y'all's consideration in the future as well, too. Again, I have been working with Tina and, as, as well as Teresa on looking at, looking into all the legalities of all the different funding aspects for that type of a project, as well as the street use fees and whatever, thinking-
Okay.
-what these funds can be used or not used for, and so, again, I know from a, a maintenance M&amp;O standpoint, the street use fees are, are, are good, now, brand-new construction, I think we'd have to look into that, based on the parameters of, of the, of the actual fee itself, but again, we have been looking, I believe, at the same area that you're talking about, and we, we do have a plan to bring something to-
At some, at some point, we'll, we'll see something in the near future, okay, good, all right, good, thanks.
Yes, yes, sir.
What I think we wanna make sure we do, is make sure the citizens understand that we're taking care of their streets, existing streets as a priority, and, because we've had obviously issues with that, so I think we have to look at it as two, two-pronged. One, how do we ensure the citis, to the citizens that we are taking care of existing problems as a priority, and then how do we, on the second prong, create a funding avenue strategy for those kinds of projects? But I know that the citizens are gonna want a strong explanation on how are you gonna get my street done?
Yes, ma'am.
Or my streets done?
Yep, I, I understand that completely, yes, ma'am.
You have a conversation with the-
Every now and then, yes, sir.
Lucy, you're on.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, when y'all are talking about this, I'm thinking, okay, so, are we talking about all the money in the city, so, this is where I think there'll be a problem, if you're taking all the money from my district and taking it and using it for District 1, I mean, that's what I'm saying, how would you go about doing that?
Well, when we start looking at the street use fee, it would be applied all over, and it'd be applied based on a priority basis, not necessarily, when we start looking at it, again, we, we, we go back to the Food Grow Study, where we prioritized our roadways, and we start looking at, one, you know, we, you know, and of course, we started with our major, our arterials and our minor arterials and our collectors, those are the ones that see the most traffic every day, that have the most problems, the, the biggest issues, and so, let's get those cleaned up, you know, those are our number-one priority, and we start looking at this, we start looking at maintenance activities, O&amp;M activities where the street use fee would be utilized for, you know, again, it's gonna be on a priority basis, we're gonna go find the worst streets, no matter whose district it's in, and then apply-
Okay, but we're not talking residential, then, we're just talking the-
Yes, we are talking residential.
Yeah, we're talking resident, we're talking, you know, arterials all the way down to, down to residential streets in front of houses, so, no, we're not, we're not planning on, you know, taking all the money and just going and putting it on one or two streets here or there, we're talking-
You'd have a study.
Yes, it would be a more of a maintenance, it would be more of a maintenance-type activity, or rehabili-, you know, minor rehabilitative effort on some of our, especially our residential streets, where we don't, where we typically don't need full reconstructions, we do, we could get away with a milliner and overlay process on those streets, to where we do have, where we've started losing, or we started seeing pavement separation from asphalt, where we have severe alligator cracking, those type of things, we could go in there, mill, proof roll, and, and do an overlay on it, and, and buy that street another 10 or 15 years easily with, within that program, so.
Well, it goes back to the conversation that many people will try to have with us, which we can't do, and they go, well, we pay more property taxes than you pay, so, I should be the bigger priority, well, we can't, it goes into one pot, and then you prioritize what that pot pays for. We can't get into the, but I paid, and I deserve, it's all prioritized based off of need.
Based, based off, you know, you know, and when it comes to, to, to streets and things like that, we'll, you know, we look at the, you know, the pavement condition scores, and we, we look at the, and how severe, what the severity of those, and then we look at, you know, we look at the average daily traffic on that roadway, we look at any life safety issues, and then we make those prioritizations based on those, those criteria as to what streets that we address next.
Mayor.
Yes, Daniel.
And, and the goal is also to, to save, when you maintain some of the streets, you actually save them, you let them go, because you're prioritizing other areas, you let those go, so, what we're gonna end up with later on is having to reconstruct those streets, instead of just a simple mainten- maintenance or seal coat, now you're looking at 10 or 15 times the cost of having just maintained that street, so that's why these programs, maintenance programs are so important to us as well. But, yeah, the milliner overlay, that's something that, again, we'll continue talking as far as the in-house part of it, I think that's gonna be a wonderful idea, but again, yeah, the maintenance part of it just has to happen.
Any further comments from council?
Yes, ma'am.
Larry, would you like to speak?
A couple of questions, essentially, it's a road tax, right?
Yeah, call it what you want, it's a road tax. Yeah, I mean, it's, it is, it, I mean, it, it's a fee that's gonna cost citizens dollars, and it's, yeah, it's, it's all terminology, but again, it's a, but again, it's a fee based on, and again, a, a fee, I mean, yes, it costs citizens, but it's not a tax, and it's not a property tax, where it's set in stone for a whole year as a, as a fee, it's done, probably, my guess is, Teresa, this would be more of a resolution-based fee, or an ordinance-based fee, where, you know, it could be changed or altered at the will of the council, and not based on standards set in state law.
It is a use fee, there's a, there's a legal distinction between what a tax and what a fee is, and this is definitely a fee-
Apparently, this has been in existence up in Abilene for some time, I don't know how long, it's a surprise to me.
About two and a half years.
All right, and the mayor said that the city seems pleased with it, but I'm, I'm kinda curious how it's been responded to by the citizens of Abilene, whether, whether there's complaints concerning this use fee, or whether it's been accepted well within the community.
You know, you look at two things, if you want street work done, you have a couple options, and one is borrow the money, and you can only borrow up to a certain level. You, you know, we have to be creative in terms of figuring out how to resolve the issues that exist, and so, the conversation is, how do you wanna resolve the issue? We need to do street work, we need to, it's a number one, the citizens have said it's our number-one priority, get the streets done, so it's our job to figure creatively how we get it done. We are not in the business, I don't think, of wanting to raise property taxes, so you get down to one other option.
And, and further, I, I believe that the citizens have, have accepted it, and, and have, I, I think they're seeing, you know, the, the fruits of their, of their dollars up there on that program as well, too, so, and I believe, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that that actually, this fee, that fee was actually done by a referendum as well, so, I believe that the voters went out and, and passed it, and, you know, actually passed the referendum to, to have the fee placed there in Abilene as well. Don't think that that was the case for all the rest of the cities in the state, but I do know that Abilene did have a referendum.
Well, I know that Abilene is going to this fall season, go out for a big bond election on top of it, so, it didn't solve the problem.
Couple of final questions, how's this gonna be collected? What, what, is this a property tag, including the property tax, or?
No, this would be on the utility billing statement.
Okay, and is there anything based on tonnage, or is it simply trips?
Again, that would be for us to work, as, as we bring, as we bring these options to you, to look at, in the, in a future meeting, I, I don't necessarily know it would be based on tonnage, because that would be hard to, that would be hard for us to bill, as, you know, I drive a one-ton pickup, and, you know, my neighbor next door drives a, a little car, and so, it would be hard to know, you know, who to bill what, at, at each red- know, who to bill what at, at each residence for, for that, for on a month-to-month basis and people changing cars, things like that. So most of it is trip generation based. I've not seen anything based on weight unless they're actually more of a toll road type situation where, where you actually are basing in on numbers of, on the number of axles versus the actual number of times that you pass through, so. But again, it would, everybody that we've seen so far has been mostly based on a trip generation schedule through, there are all the, and I can't remember, I'd have to look it up, I think there's 15 or 18 cities throughout the state of Texas that have a similar fee and most of, most all, if, if not all, are trip generation based. Now, everybody has their own nuances for their own community, but again, it's, it's, it's trip-based.
The other issue with that, and we should talk through that just again on a general basis, is residential versus commercial.
Yes, and, and we will. I mean, there's, there's, there is actually a national, there's actually a national guide for trip generation through, I can't remember if it's.
Federal.
Federal Highway, Federal Highway, if, Federal Highway Administration. But there is actually a trip generation guide that they have established for all, whether it's residential and it's, I think it's even, breaks down residential based on even square footage of residential, residential size and then it also goes into different classifications of commercial. What's, how many was there?
There's over 200 classifications.
Yeah, two. Yeah, there's over 200 different trip, trip generators, classifications within, within their guidelines. So it gets quite detailed. And again, I believe most communities have paired that well down to 50 or 60, identified 50 or 60 trip generators based on their businesses within their community. And we'll, we'll bring a lot more detailed guidelines when we come back to, for everybody to look at. And we'll bring, you know, we'll pick out several businesses, different kinds of businesses throughout town that, and so people can kinda see what that would look like for each business based on what these trip generators would, would do and based on how, how, how y'all want to assign those dollars for each trip generation. But we'll bring, we'll bring that for y'all to look at.
Is council in support of looking at some alternative funding?
Yes, ma'am.
Issues versus a just traditional, go out and borrow the money?
Mayor, we can, yeah, we can come back on that workshop that Shane was talking about. We do have a budget workshop, we call it other budget workshop and we can come back with a proposal or some ideas that we can bounce off city council members, see what y'all think and kinda get some guidance on that as well. Okay. I, I do wanna say though, Mayor, that if you look at, the work that's been done to this point, not just the pay-as-you-go, the seal code program, the reconstruction program, there's a lot that this council, this administration's worked on to really get some of the streets back in order. One of the, and it's not just City of San Angelo, but a lot of cities across the state of Texas and the, in the United States actually, when a crisis occurs and finances go down, one of the first things they cut money from is from the infrastructure program. They say, hey, we're not gonna spend money on that. Well, that just worsens the situation as the, as the years go by, it just grows and grows. And we are, we are right now at, at the point that the magnitude of streets that have to be done falls on, on this council and this administration and we just had to come up with a, a solution, a plan that really works out and really address it and move forward with it.
Well, I think it's important to understand that the need for money and the need for work on our streets will never end.
That's right.
It will be, it's just gonna be one of the largest budgetary concerns and issues that we have on an ongoing basis, 'cause even once you get it done, I mean, you think, how many miles of streets do we have in this city? Do you not know that number?
No, I, I do know that number. And again, and of course, and I hate doing everything on lane miles 'cause everybody has a different edition of, definition of lane miles, but you know, we have about 11.5 million square yards of, of paved roadways in the city, so again.
Takes a lot of money.
Yeah, that's it, it's, you know, roughly 1,200 lane miles, so again, depends on your definition of lane mile, but again, we're, but again, no, we have.
The work will never be done, but the need for money will always exist.
Correct. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, some of the first, we're looking at MLK Drive and some of those that we, we did three and four years ago. Well, you know, when we start looking at, when we start looking at maintenance, you know, we're, we're, we're not far away from needing, starting to need to go back and, and actually put a seal code on it. So I mean, it's, it's one of those things that you build it and it's nice, but if, if we don't, if we don't maintain it, it won't, it won't stay nice. And so, and even though we think it's brand new, but we're, we're not too far off and we're gonna need a seal code on it, so.
I would hope that's one of those things, too, that we build into this program that we are ever mindful. We've gotten behind the eight ball. Now we're, those of us sitting here now are having to deal with that. So that's not blaming anybody, it just happened.
It's reality.
It is reality, but now we're behind the eight ball, we gotta catch up. But let's don't let it fall on us that we got further behind the eight ball because we didn't address it. So whatever we need to do to address it, let's.
We need the citizens to know it's our top priority and we're gonna continue to look at avenues to take care of the work that's needed.
Yeah.
Bottom line.
And this, and this council, this administration has not cut back on, on the infrastructure project. We've continued to push forward and make sure that we maintain a certain level. I mean, we're dedicating about 11 to 12 million dollars per year now just to address streets, you know, and again, a lot of that is catch-up work from back in the past, but that's okay, but we know that it still has to get done, you know, so we need to have an answer for that.
Okay. Shane, continue or are you done?
I'm, that, that wraps up my presentation. I'm gonna pass the wand to Allison here and let her talk about water and wastewater.
Okay. Allison, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm gonna give a brief update on where we are.
Your microphone's not on, dear.
Just begin to.
I'll pull it closer. Okay. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. Need a booster seat.
We forgot to bring those.
Yeah.
For, as of April 1st, we're sitting at 62 months of water supply, which is some really high numbers compared to where I've reported to y'all previously. I know that I brought to this council drought level one, even on the verge of drought level two before, so I'm really happy to report 62 months of water supply. The reason for April 1st, we're not doing this every single month, is CRMWD does provide those updates only to us for Lake Ivy in January and in July. So I did kind of a midpoint between those two, but I will do the next update in July when we receive CRMWD's Lake Ivy number. But we have received some beneficial rain during that time, so I hope to keep this number steady as we move into the summer months. But we're also moving into the summer months where we start seeing our water plant usage start ticking up. So I just wanna show this graph in terms of where we are in our annual production rates. So this average that you see for each year is from January through December, so the summer peaks to the winter lows. We are seeing that daily usage level gradually increase for San Angelo, but we are seeing development in those type of things, so we do expect our usage to go up.
And a lot of new residential, so you've got a combination of those.
Yeah.
Correct. So 73% of our water use is residential-based, 12% commercial, 11% institutional and the remaining 4% industrial. So heavy residential base, which with heavy residential, sorry, you do see that irrigation or those peak demands in the summer. I believe in 2020, we were at 22 million gallons per day, or that's 2019, and we're roughly 20 million gallons a day of, of peak summer usage for those two summers and mainly that's all.
Say that number again.
2019, we saw 22 million gallons a day being pushed out of our water plant was the high number. In 2020, it was 20 million gallons, so we did, it was lower. But all of that is very dependent upon rainfall, the watering schedule that, you know, when people typically water their yard and also the, the summer temps, so all of that kinda. But we're roughly in the low twenties for peak summer usage and mainly off irrigation So I'm just gonna hit through the big water supply projects. One of them is the Ford Ranch and the Hickory Groundwater Project. So the ranch is sold, we sold it in six different parcels and retaining all Hickory groundwater rights. So the next project that we have already secured funding for through Texas Water Development Board is to expand that groundwater project by drilling five additional wells, adding booster pump station capacity as well as treatment capacity. Currently, we can pump and treat 8 million gallons. After this project, we'll be able to pump our full allocation, which is the 12 million gallons. Another important part of this project as we expand it is it are, it is addressing some very old infrastructure at the water plant, which is our clear wells. So both our surface water and our groundwater get blended in what we call the clear wells. That's the last chlorination process before it's pumped and treated, or pumped and sent out to the distribution system. That will be upgrading that clear well. We have one currently. It make, it would create two clear wells so that we can take one down for maintenance and still have one operational. So we are making that initial improvement to the water treatment facility with this project. Those plans have been designed and they are sitting at TCQ and Texas Water Development Board. Once we receive their approval, hopefully within the next month or so, we will start bidding out that project for the drilling and the treatment system capacity.
What timeframe will that, it will it take to drill the wells and do the work on the treatment?
I think we're looking at two years by the time we drill wells and do the treatment system upgrades. Some of that can occur simultaneously, but the drilling of the wells will be the first start in that process.
Okay.
This is just a look at, or overview of the ranch. So all the blue dots that you see are existing wells. The five red dots are the new proposed wells that will be drilled as a part of this project. We have permits to be able to drill three additional locations in the green locations, but what we're able to pump and treat, the 20 wells that we are proposed after this project will be able to get us to our full allocation.
So we don't really need.
No, those, but we did, when we did sell the ranch, we did retain ownership of those locations. So in the event of ever necessary to go drill those three additional sites, we have access and we have the ability to do so. The next big water supply project that we're working on is the Concho River Water Project. This project does discharge highly-treated wastewater into the Concho River. It allows it to flow down its natural pipeline of the Concho River for about seven and a half river miles to the red star where it would be taken out of the river and piped back to the yellow star on the map you see, which it would be an advanced water treatment system. This is an indirect reuse project that the city did take action on in 2017 to pursue. Both of the permits that we have to apply for with the state of Texas have been submitted. We do know that that is a lengthy process to, we're applying for a discharge and a bed and banks pro, or permit and both of those have been submitted, but they're in the TCQ hopper, so we'll continue to work through that regulatory process.
And the timeframe you think will be a couple of years, three years?
We do anticipate a couple of years for the regulatory process to get those permits because there's a lot of notice requirements, a lot of environmental review and all of those type of things that will be accounted for. So yes, a couple of years for that. And how this all stacks up together, the blue that you see on this graph is our allocation from the Hickory, so roughly 12,000 acre feet. The red is what we can safely rely upon from our surface water sources. So that's Lake Ivy, Twin Buttes, Lake Nazworthy in the Concho River. As we all are aware, drought has plagued our reservoirs extremely, so Twin Buttes, Lake Nazworthy, OC Fisher, all of them have a firm yield of zero. So that means we can rely upon nothing from those reservoirs in the drought of record. So mainly that red portion of the graph that you see is the reliable portion from Lake Ivy. The green is the Concho River. It does have a, we have not seen the Concho River dry luckily, so it does have some reliable safe yield. And then you stack that orange piece, which is the Concho River water supply, to the graph and to our portfolio and you see that we go from 2020 to 2070 in terms of meeting our demands for our city, the population growth that you see in the dashed and solid line. The dash line is a high demand population growth and then the, the steady black line is a population growth that we see more historically through San Angelo, so that you can see we can make it several decades with this water portfolio package that we're trying to build for the city.
And so what we're looking at, that orange part is this Concho River project, which again, we, from a regulatory approval process, will be at least two years in between, and that's just to get it approved. So the timeframe on that orange, the most, the first time you think it'll be effective in terms of this graph is in the year 2030?
I don't, just because we did this by decades, I don't have exactly when it would be implemented between 2020 and 2030, but yes, the plan or the projections are to bring it online prior to 2030. We can start working on the design upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant to get it upgraded to the standards of a discharge permit or to a discharge quality wastewater. It already needs those improvements like we've discussed before. And so we can start that design project, so as soon as those permits are acquired, we can go out for construction and begin that process.
Okay. Questions, comments from any of council at this point? Harry?
Just one quick question. With our Fort, Fort Stockton Holdings that will exchange with Midland, oh, thank you. I was trying to get to the spot, I was trying to get to the spot on the graph where we were constant on OHIV water and I was trying to get.
Good enough, keep moving on. Yes, so the last slide I do have in terms of water supply is our West Texas Water Partnership Water and our collaboration with those other two cities, Abilene and Midland. This is over and above that, we've always discussed that the partnership water is for that long-term, outside of what we are doing ourselves with the Concho River Project, that multi-generation, if not century-based water supply project, which is the Fort Stockton Holdings water. So last May, we did sign that contract with Fort Stockton Holdings and San Angelo did contract for the 5,000 acre feet. All of that, as y'all are aware, is split between the three cities based off need and I'll be happy to answer any other questions about that.
Would you go back to the last slide? When we start taking a look at high demand versus low demand or current trend, what growth per year is the trend based off?
I would have to go back to Texas Water Development Board, but they did that study based off the regional water planning process. So it is specific to our region. It doesn't encounter, or account for the same population growth you would see in the Houston or the Coastal Bend area. So it is specific to our Regent F water planning, but I don't remember what percent growth. I believe the low percent is somewhere in the 2.5 to 3%, but you can kinda see that those lines during 2020 and 2030 are a little steeper than 2030 and beyond and I just don't remember what that initial decade's population growth was.
Because I think everyone's comments would be the following, that based, if you drive around town and look at all the new development that is happening, that it would be a percentage that although you'd be at a higher level, a, a higher growth than we have experienced over the past decade?
Mm-hmm. And so the, the solid line is what we've typically seen and that's why we would also wanna plan for the dash line, which is that higher. So if in the next few years, we do a, we do see a much higher percentage rate of growth, we're still allowing ourselves within that buffer to still meet these water demands and plan appropriately for that larger increase.
But that's one of the reasons why we did look at the West Texas Water Partnership, because if you take a look at that graph and go, the dotted line will tell you that we're gonna need more water.
Yes.
It exceeds the trend line.
Yes, what, either way you look at this graph, either in 2050 or 2070, one of those decades, you are going to need, based off the growth between now and that time, you are going to need additional water supplies.
That's what we need to make sure everyone understands is because some people might say, we have all the water we need, what are we doing? But if you take a look at this graph, it says we don't have all the water that we need for the future. And so we had to continue to look at alternative water supplies to take care of the high demand issue.
Correct. And I think the other important part to note is that the red portion of this graph that you see is Ivy. We have not seen Ivy go functionally dry, but we've seen it at 14%, so we've seen it at a very low reservoir. So we may not have seen the drought of record in the past, so we could be coming up on a new drought. So we could be coming up on a new drought of record where Ivy could go away. So we always have to make sure that we have diversified water supplies so that we can, in the event Ivy weren't reliable, based off history, we would have something to supplement that red graph with.
The reason the groundwater is important versus surface water?
Correct.
And also just to reemphasize the fact, we might have water rights at several sources, but those sources are not available to us because the water is so low that we can't use it. So even though we might say we have X amount of.
On paper, we have 125, roughly 1,000 acre feet.
But we don't have it in reality.
And we can rely upon six.
Yeah, repeat that again, because everyone needs to understand that.
On paper, we have 125,000 acre feet of water rights. What Texas Water Development Board and the Region F water planning say we can safely rely upon is 6,100.
That's important information.
I mean, I do want to point out that in 2070, our citizens, our kids, our grandkids will be looking back at what this council is doing and saying, thank you all, thank you all for thinking that much ahead.
And I repeat again, repeat those numbers. How much do we have available versus how much is usable?
125,000 acre feet of paper rights, usable 6,100. Of surface rights, just our surface, that doesn't account for the Hickory.
Yes, Dan, Michael.
Also, these growth trends may change based on the recent experience associated with Texas being seen as a favorable place to live and do business.
It's the reason I was asking about the trend line.
So that was the water supply update, and I'm going to briefly go over the wastewater. And really what I want to highlight is our Lake Nazworthy sewer project. So it is the largest outside of the street program. It is our largest project that we are working on the design for, to increase the sewer capacity at the Lake Nazworthy and the airport area. Y'all are aware of this project, and we brought it back to council in April of 2021, as far as the alignment goes. So we are continuing with that. They are about to, they've done a preliminary archaeological survey of that stretch of the river and those locations. The next step is they have to do these backhoe tests where they do have to dig trenches, see the different soil layers, and is a part of the archaeological and historical design review from the state of Texas. After that, we can pursue the final design and get that project going. It is a project estimate at $32 million. And the last slide I have is just the preliminary alignment that y'all were presented with. It's very zoomed out as far as trying to cover the full project, but this is the project that we are working on intensely with the sewer side of our operation.
This is obviously a big council project that is supported aggressively, and so we know that a lot of growth can't happen until this project, or it slows down the growth until this project is completed. So update us in terms of what we think the current timeline is.
Sorry, let me get a piece of paper out. We received from our consultants, pending, everything is, I guess, acceptable by the historical and archaeological reviews and those design commission state of Texas approvals. We could start seeing the final design starting in August or September or the fall of this year. Those preparation of those construction documents would go through the end of the year, and you could see construction possibly July, August timeframe of 2022. And it is a several-year project, so construction-wise. So looking at possibly 2023 or the first part of 2024.
So when we talk about the design work and the beginning construction, there would be no opportunity to use any of it until the entire construction project is done? Or are some things going to come online, if you will, prior to final construction?
Because most of our, I guess, capacity needs are at the airport, which is the, basically the end of the line, we couldn't see those facilities be able to upgrade to a larger capacity because they need the full service or the full installation of the line. Now, there will be possibly some lift stations, one near like Sonrisus and those areas. As the line is brought to those areas, we can take those lift stations offline and be able to serve those areas. But really, the capacity needs is at the Lake Nazworthy or across the lake area, and so the full project does have to be installed to be able to utilize or to be able to see that additional capacity be available.
So we can't reverse that and get the airport on first and then go down?
No.
Just asking.
We can build the lift station, but it would have no pipeline to dump into.
Just to be clear.
No, but I'm, I'm with Brenda. I mean, if, if we are in the process and we're having, I mean, there's people that are going to take one to two to three years to build what they want to build at the airport. I see no reason to hold them up one or two or three years. I mean, the only thing that would be at risk here would be success on our end. And I would think with the $32 million investment, we could go to somebody and say, we know that by this date, we will be able to plug in a hotel. We would be able to plug in restaurants. We would be able to plug in other things where people could put their basic infill there, so we don't put them one to two years behind the start.
Yes, because they have construction documents and funding documents that they too need to work on, but to say no to them today, when we know the future will take care of it, would be wrong to hold them up.
But I don't know, we would just love to let that thing, open the valve to be able to flush it.
Daniel, go ahead.
I was going to say, it would just be the pressure, Allison, to get it done on time, that's, that's it.
We hate to put that weight on your shoulders, but.
I was going to say, build a brand-new hotel and then have it wait. It's all very much a timing issue, but I do understand where you're coming from. There is a time to construct this, there is a time to construct the improvements or those additional facilities out at the lake and the airport area. But we would just have to work through the timing and make sure that we don't put the cart before the horse.
Also because interest rates are low at this point in time, so a lot of people are looking to develop based off of low interest rates. So in three to four years, interest rates could make a significant difference in the cost of construction. So we just need to make sure we're working with people and they understand a timeline. We don't want to miss an opportunity.
No, no pressure, Allison.
Yeah, I said, no pressure.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a break?
Yes.
Yes, let's take a 10-minute break. All right, thank you, everyone. And we will now move into economic development. The first one's development services.
And that's, I'm going to take the first one, then I'll hand it off to Guy in a little bit. I'm going to go quickly through these. You've seen these before, but you may recall, six or eight years ago, the department established goals to reduce review times, get better information to citizens, provide good customer service, and helping make sure.
There's nothing up. We're unhooked down here. Okay.
So anyway, we established goals to basically improve the development review process and then give some, a little bit of information of what we did. Created a single point of contact where all developers will come to one place to get their answers. We had pre-application review meetings. I'll talk about those more in a minute. And one of the things we did was to control, controls to ensure consistency, so that we're applying the rules fairly and evenly to everyone and inspections as well. And we standardized a lot of our processes, created checklists and handouts, both to help staff process, but also to help applicants know what it is that they need to be submitting. And as you know, we've implemented some new permanent review software, plan review software, as well as some case management tracking that's helped us make some of the improvements that I'll, I'll talk about in just a second. We have fully rolled out the plan review software for commercial projects. Last year, we processed 213 commercial projects through that online or digital plan review software, as well as 239 plat, site plans and design reviews. We've recently started, just in the past year, reviewing residential plans as well. We've been doing commercial years, commercial plans for two or three years now, and now we're doing all residential plan review through that online software as well. We are rolling out something that you guys authorized for us last year, an online application system and a payment system, so that now not only can they submit the digital documents that we review through our process, but they can submit those online and actually make their payment online as well. And then finally, we're implementing a text-based system for inspection requests, so that a contractor out in the field can just text us, I'm ready for my inspection. It'll be scheduled, they'll get a text message back with when that's scheduled, and then once the inspector has completed his inspection, that will send a result back to the contractor, yes, you passed, or no, please contact us, you know, for more information. So we hope that will help simplify that process. And I know we, sometimes we get so many phone calls a day scheduling inspections that people sometimes can't get through when it's busy, just because those people are already on the phone with somebody else scheduling. And so this will, we think, help us, just so that they can text it into us and not actually have to call in. So we do our pre-development meetings, we call them consultations and development review committees. We started those a few years ago, and you can see we've really been pushing those because we've found that people who go through a pre-development meeting have fewer issues throughout the development process because they get in at the beginning and we are able to answer their questions. And so when they actually come in to submit, you know, they, they know what they need to submit, and it makes the process much smoother. And you can see from 2017 to 2020, we've increased the number of those significantly, and I think that's helped reduce some of the timeframes as well.
Which would seem to make sense on larger projects, but on the smaller projects, it seems like, because there's a fee attached, right? Is there a fee attached to it?
Oh, no, for the pre-development meeting, no, those are at no charge to the customer.
But those seem to work good for big projects. It's the smaller individual projects that don't, that very often create the issues and are not really the right vehicle for the smaller projects. Because I think the key thing for me is it's great to be as standardized as possible so all things apply to all things equally. The problem is it doesn't allow for the flexibility that is needed and necessary. It shouldn't, it should be quite obvious if someone's front door is now what would have been traditionally the back door, and the back door is traditionally not the front door, and yet we have very little flexibility in reviewing those items and create too much tension because of the lack of flexibility and relooking at it relative to what the project is, not what we want it to be or not what is traditional.
And we do have some flexibility built into the process, but to the extent there's not, in many cases, that would take changes to the ordinance to clean that up. But we do, the way, the philosophy under our current ordinance is, is generally that staff shouldn't be making those decisions, and so those decisions are pushed off to citizen boards, like the planning commission or the zoning board of adjustment.
So we aren't relooking at the future trends of what's happening in construction and building to bring back to council before it becomes such a major issue?
Yeah, in fact, towards the end of the presentation, I'll get to some things we're doing to help address some of those concerns, actually. And I'm a, I'll go quickly on this one because I think the next slide is more important, but the average review time from, for, these are for commercial plan reviews, has gone from 13 days back in 2016 to about 10 days in 2020. And the number under that, the five days, that's for a resubmission if, if they needed to, if they got comments back from us and they had to resubmit with some new information, then that follow-up review averages about five days. And so those are going much quicker than they have in the past. But one of the things, rather than average, what we've started looking at is how many of the projects are submitted are completed within our recommended timeframe, which is three weeks. And so you can see, from 2016, we did about, a little over half of the projects that came in, we reviewed within our goal of three weeks. Last year, we reviewed 92% of our projects within that three-week period. And by contrast, the reviews that took over six weeks, those were always pretty low, but this past year, we didn't have a single commercial plan review that took over six weeks to review.
Is that because we didn't have a commercial plan submitted?
No, actually.
Just asking.
We, we did see, and you'll see in some of the numbers in a minute, our residential construction went way up in the past year. Commercial was down slightly, but not as much as we expected. We still had quite a few commercial projects come in last year. We also do customer surveys to every customer that comes in, the developers, contractors, we send out surveys. And last year, 100% of the respondents said that staff was professional and responsive. That was up from 90% in 2016. We also track how long it takes a customer when they walk in the door to see someone. 80% of our customers were assisted immediately, 15% within five minutes. So that's 95% of our customers when they walk in the door. If they have to wait, it's usually less than five minutes.
But when you say 100% of respondents said that staff is professional and responsive, that's based off a number of people who responded. One would assume that those who didn't respond weren't so happy.
Yeah, now, we do get feedback from folks who weren't happy. In this case, you know, they, I think, the, the point I want to make here is that they, even if they're not happy with our answers, they believe we're treating them professionally. And so, again, not everybody who walks out our doors are happy with the answers they get, but our goal is to be professional and give them answers in a professional way and be responsive to their questions. Again, similarly, 100% of the customers, it's the first time we've gotten 100% were satisfied with the customer service response from the city staff. Again, like you said, that doesn't necessarily mean they were happy with the answer, and just a couple of comments that were written in from our folks who went through the process and found our system helpful to them. We are, as you alluded to earlier, we, we look at ordinance amendments. We're, we're doing them a piece at a time. And so, for example, you recently saw us bring to you parking standards, mobile home standards, and a temporary fix of the sign regulations. We've got on our schedule to get a permanent fix of those sign regulations. You may remember that's based on some recent court cases. That's in process and will be coming to you hopefully by the end of the year. We've also, at your direction, a couple of years ago, we're updating the bicycle plan. You all adopted an ordinance change regarding bicycle lanes, but that was not implemented until we get that bike plan updated, and so we're coordinating with the MPO to do that. We've also been working with our development community on an ordinance that would affect street widths, as well as requiring sidewalks in new development. I'll mention the street width specifically, as, as you heard from Shane, and as you talked a lot this morning about street costs and construction, one of the things, one of the reasons our streets are expensive is that they're much wider. We require wider new streets than almost any city of our peer cities.
And why do we do that?
Well.
Because it's also expensive to the city when we have to redo them?
Yes.
Because they're wider than, the costs are greater than other cities, so it doesn't seem to be working in the correct way.
Well, and that's why we're bringing this ordinance to reduce the street widths. Now, I'll tell you, historically, the reason the streets were made wide is that at some point, 20 or 30 years ago, it was decided, we don't want to require sidewalks in new development, so we'll make the streets wider to accommodate walkers in the street. And so what we're looking at is going back to the way virtually every city in the state does it, narrower streets, but then having sidewalks on the street as that safe place for, for people to walk. And so there'll be a trade-off there with the narrower streets. Will save developers a significant amount of money, but then it'll cost them some on the sidewalk side as well. But like you said, it will, over time, as these new streets are built, it will save long-term the city money, you know, going from a 40-foot street to, say, a 32-foot street will make a significant difference, both on initial construction as well as, as we look at resurfacing and all of those things.
How does that address older parts of town, for example, like Lakeview, where curb and gutter doesn't exist, where street widths are significantly not 32 or 40? and gutter doesn't exist, where street widths are significantly not 32 or 40, and the ability to widen them is pretty limited, based off of decades of those things not being in existence?
That's a good question. In fact, this, this draft ordinance would create a, what we call a minimum street width. So right now, we basically have one standard street width, and if you come in for any new development, that's the street width you have to meet. What this would do is have a lower minimum street width, so in areas that are already developed, as long as they meet that minimum, they can redevelop without having to widen the street.
What's the average street width in Lakeview now, based off of the old historic Lakeview streets?
It varies, I mean, 26 feet. We have, we actually have, as part of this, we've created a map of the city with the street widths color-coded, so we know what, you know, what streets, because what we wanted to do was make sure that minimum met things like fire code, but also accommodated the street widths that are out there. And so a lot of those streets are 24, 26 feet, and so that's kind of the ballpark that we're looking at as that minimum.
So we would use 26 feet as a minimum in that Lakeview area, or 24, depending on how it's currently constructed, we would live with current construction, because in some cases, grass is overgrown, where the pavement has rotted or washed away due to flooding or water flow, and so they've even become more narrow than they were before?
Well, and that's something we're gonna look at in these standards, because in some cases, what we've had on recent developments, where we've had, right now, it's a variance process that has to go to the planning commission, and they actually have to approve the narrower street. Under this new ordinance, that it would be basically automatic if you meet that minimum. But then an issue we still need to look at is that curbing, and what we've required in a couple of cases is ribbon curbing or just a flat curb, and if you put the flat curb in, it helps maintain that pavement edge so that the asphalt doesn't wear away. So that's one of the standards that we're looking at for the new ordinance. So even if a developer doesn't have to widen the street, they may have to put in a, you know, a one-foot-wide strip of curb concrete, just to help maintain that pavement edge.
Are there, are there areas in town that would be similar to the Lakeview area that we need to make sure we're flexible on that as well?
Yes, the ordinance would apply citywide, so any substandard street would be eligible for that minimum street width. And we do have other areas in town that have those same narrower streets, because that's how they were historically built.
Okay.
So these are the ordinance things that are either done or in process. I just wanted to briefly talk about some of the things we're looking at, and I won't read through each of these, but a number of them are based on concerns we've seen, for example, looking at building setbacks. The, the most common case we get for the zoning board of adjustment is asking for a difference in building setbacks from what the ordinance requires. And so we want to look at that and see where, historically, in certain neighborhoods, how close to the street have homes been built, because we don't want every development in that neighborhood to have to come in for a street, or I'm sorry, setback variance. We can change the ordinance just to make that, just like with the street minimum, we could have a minimum setback, so that they could be a little closer to the street than maybe what we require for new homes.
Could you go back to that previous slide for one minute? And this just came across, says, "High Court to Hear Speech Battle Over Austin Billboard Rule." So it says, "The U.S. Supreme Court said Monday that it would hear a First Amendment challenge to an Austin city ordinance barring certain types of digital billboards." FYI.
That's one reason why we, you know, put that temporary fix on our sign regulations, because that is a very active area of litigation right now. And there've been a number of cases from the Supreme Court that have invalidated portions of our sign ordinance, and so we're just, we've modified it so that we don't have to deal with that. But Austin tends to lead the way in Texas on those kinds of issues. They're very aggressive on signs, and so I hadn't seen that yet, but that's good to know that that's going forward.
So again, we're, we're looking piecemeal at different sections of our ordinance, things that we see come up over and over from, from the development community. We want to look at cleaning up those pieces of the ordinance to address some of the concerns that we've heard. Another example is the Beauregard Sherwood corridor overlay. There's that stretch of Beauregard and Sherwood where all of the buildings are built up to the street, sort of like downtown buildings, and so redevelopment of those are very difficult. They have parking issues, they always have setback issues. So we're looking at a corridor overlay, basically to apply different rules for that corridor to help encourage and spur redevelopment of those buildings without having to jump through so many hoops, to get those variances and, and changes to the rules, make that simpler. Another one, the thoroughfare plan amendment, the inter, the proposed interstate corridor is currently not on our thoroughfare plan, and so the fear is, if, if somebody comes in with development within that corridor, they could basically block the ability to get that, that corridor through. And there are a couple of parts of town where it's, it's very critical, there's a narrow path where that's the only place that roadway can go, so getting that on our official map would, would be beneficial.
I'm surprised we haven't done that already since the Porte du Plains corridor has been a 25-year project, so we're kind of behind the eight ball on that, if 25 years later, we still haven't designated it.
Well, the, part of the issue there is, it's, it's been fairly recently that an actual corridor has been identified. There, there were multiple optional corridors before, and so we've basically been waiting on that, so that we could nail it down, something that we could actually put on a map. So I wanted to go into the development over the past couple of years, just to give an overview. In 2019, we had 279 new single-family homes permitted. In 2020, that almost tripled to 726 homes. We're, we're still high for 2021, we've got 207 already. If you projected that out to the end of the year, that would be around 500, so we're still...
They're slowing down based off of commodity costs.
Yeah, and we have heard lumber, for example, is coming down, not to where it was, but those prices are coming down, and, but the good news is, we're still way over our normal for home building, even with those high prices. And we've seen more subdivisions over the past year, at least since I've been here. So single-family lots will soon be available in the, literally hundreds of lots. And then for multifamily housing, multifamily housing, we didn't see much at all for probably decades, really, until the last eight or 10 years, and we've seen that blow up, especially in 2020, 237 multifamily housing units. 50 of those were in duplexes, but 187 were in apartments.
Are those apartment units?
Apartment units, yes. And then...
So that's one complex?
Uh, that's either one or two complexes, that 187, yeah, and the same with the 70 back in 2019. We've consistently seen one or two a year for the past few years. 2021, we haven't seen any. Part of that may be there's a number under construction right now, and so the market's probably waiting to see how those do before they, you don't want to oversaturate on multifamily. That's, that's kind of the overview of development process and new development, but...
Here are my challenges and issues I'd like us to look at. Number one, we're hearing more and more issues as it relates to neighborhoods fearing commercials coming way back into the neighborhood, and I want to know what we're, what kind of, what ordinance exists or does not exist to help protect our neighborhoods. Too many people are concerned about commercial development weaving its way back into a neighborhood. If we do or don't have anything that applies to that, are there other cities that do have that, particularly in some of the historic districts, to preserve that historic quality? And the same thing in our historic downtown area. We need to make sure we're protecting that historic downtown. If you look at all the cities around us, all of a sudden, they're all looking at development of their downtown areas, they realize that's a key economic development strategy and important to their city. And so we need to make sure that we're on top of that and that we're pushing aggressively, because we don't need Shannon Hospital to take over our historic downtown area and all of a sudden not have a historic downtown. We need to be very protective of that. And I don't see anything in place right now that is protective. And then the other issue is landscape. You know, I've, several people that I know have done developments, and we demand that they plant trees, even though if it's in October and it's 110 degrees out and it's been 110 for 10 days, and yet we want them to plant trees and there's no irrigation available. So we're forcing issues, because we won't give them a CO until they get their landscape planted, and yet it's not realistic to do that. And at the same point in time, demanding that we plant trees when there's no intent to put irrigation to those trees. So we demand that they get planted, but they could die tomorrow, and there's, you know, a dead tree there for a decade. So we just need to be, you know, we're out here, desert sort of landscape, and we need to make sure that our landscape ordinance is relevant to the climate, the rainfall that we get, and the development standards we expect. I continue to refer to flexibility versus standardization. We need more flexibility built into how we approach things, and those are my comments.
John, thank you, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much. Yes, Tom?
John, looking back on your permits and planning and trips and visits, things like, how much of that is staff-related? I mean, I remember talking with Rick when I first came in four years ago, it was, I don't have enough people. And so, I mean, is that an issue now? Do you have holes in your department that you're trying to fill and you just can't? And if we fill those, it would be better?
Well, I think you have a turnover issue, one, and the second issue is, we're starting to get a lot more computer-driven, so the requirement for staff compared to five years ago has changed.
Yeah, I, I would say we're not hurting for staff, it's not a critical issue. In one area that we have asked for one additional staff is inspections, there's, I would say there's not a need for that.
So it's not a significant problem?
It's only if we want to make the inspections go, go faster. So I wouldn't call it a problem. More people could, could help in a couple of areas, but I wouldn't call it a, a critical issue.
Then it's, it's a non-issue now, and it's not generated by lack of personnel.
Well, when you say it's not, you mean...
Slowing down.
The occasional calls I get, and the best thing we've ever done is start coaching them to do a consult. All right, I get, look, if you don't go in there and spend 10 minutes with them, it's your own fault, it's free, it's easy to do, and it will save you five trips. And people I've had that have done that, come back and said, you know what it did? It saved me five trips. And, and it's much the smaller person that didn't know the questions to ask.
One of the issues, Tom, that they have corrected is that the phone system did not roll over. So someone might have been calling and they might have left a voicemail, but no one knows it. So the new phone system rolls over, right? So how does that new phone system work compared to what it did?
We do not yet have a new phone system. I know that IT is looking into that, I don't know the status, but yeah, we've not gotten the new phone system yet.
Because that was one of the things people would say, the phone rang, and it rang, and it rang, and it rang, and no one picked it up. Well, no one knew it was ringing because of the way the phone system is set up, and so I know it happened several times a couple months ago, and that's when they relooked at it.
The number of calls I get now versus four years ago are minimal. And you just hope those things aren't staff issues or things that might be able to solve if we opened up and pursued that over, and apparently they're not, so we're all good.
And to answer that a little bit more, this depends which area you're talking about, whether it's inspections and permits, whether it's planning, you know, those are all, you know, when you're dealing with ordinance revisions and so forth, those are the planning staff. In, in John's case, he does have a lot of turnover in that department. We don't have people beating down our doors to fill those positions that are highly qualified. So that is an issue. We just had three vacancies, or we had two, and we're going to have another one?
Yeah, three total.
And that's just this year. I mean, so that's your turnover in that department, it, it's not easy. Now, as far as the inspections, because they've been encouraging the online, and COVID actually helped us push that direction, and so they have become efficient in that. Charlie, I think during the budget process, has talked about an additional position to make sure we don't start falling back on how quickly we're able to get those because of the, the big increase. So it just depends what your area, and, and once again, if you want lots of revisions to the zoning ordinance, they do them as they have time, but once again, he's three staff short, we're trying to get those on, they're untrained, and trying to bring zoning changes. So that's where, when we talk about this revision to the overall comprehensive zoning ordinance and, and doing it, you know, getting someone to, to do that, it's a contracting it out. That's something that, of course, I've been talking to council about for years, help avoid some of these problems we're seeing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guy?
Well, good morning, mayor and council. Here to give you an update on the San, City of San Angelo Development Corporation. We are a type B economic development organization, which means that we can do not only recruitment of industrial businesses, but we can also do quality of life projects. Our overall mission in, is not just recruiting businesses to this community, buying businesses to come here, but to create a place where people want to work and do business. It's all about planes, trains, and automobiles. You may have heard that somewhere before.
Oh, nowhere.
First of all, within our trains, we do have a San Angelo rail port that's under development at this time, 183 acres, that's a concept drawing of it right there. We do have the rail on site on July the 7th, that rail will begin to be installed eventually. Sorry, I'm fat-fingering this thing. Eventually, there'll be 11 turnouts such as this, this shows one of the turnouts that's already been prepared for the turnout with the rail laying along there, they'll begin to install that soon. We are part of the South Orient Rail Line, just as a reminder, it goes from Presidio, Texas, to San Angelo Junction, which is close to Coleman, or Coleman, Texas, where it connects with the BNSF rail line. And then we also connect at Presidio with the whole Mexican rail network, so there'll be a lot of potential growth, not only for local commodities and businesses, but also for imports and exports into Mexico.
Is there a new date for the opening of that bridge?
It will be, they're anticipating sometime in the fall now. There are issues with getting the border protection in place at that, but that's moving forward. The other item in regard, there's a lot of activity in our next frontier is the San Angelo Regional Airport. A lot of things going on there in terms of expansion of hangar space, both internally, new prospects, the ASU Aviation School, other things like that. So plenty of opportunities that are in early stages that will be, continue to look at.
I know the, where they had anticipated five people from the new ASU program for this fall season, they have 25 and growing.
That are growing, so tremendous opportunities out there, not only for aviation, the Border Patrol is occupying the old MCOM hangar, and lots of other things going on. We also, with the second airline, anticipate growth within the airport. That's just an overview of the comprehensive plan for the airport, and presents us with opportunities to develop various regions, both inside and outside of the airport. Again, we do now have two airlines servicing San Angelo Regional Airport, American, American has, has six flights a day now, so that's going extremely well. United provides two, so you can either fly out of here and go to DFW or Houston International to connect anywhere in the world. Jeremy likes to say, a lot of times, you can build a mile of roadway, or you can buy, build a mile of runway to get wherever you need to go in this world, so. We have done some airport improvements, there's about 14 acres across that has been cleared. We're building a monument on this, this is the concept drawing for that monument. And this is actually as of last week, where that monument sits, they're doing a lot of the rock work and that sort of thing as well, so just part of what we do for open space improvements. A lot of things have happened in I-27 Porte du Plains, the most progress has been made in 25 years on this process. The legislation has established a steering committee, which our mayor will be a part of that effort, continued effort. We just had a board meeting on Friday in Lubbock, and things continue, especially for Texas, to move along extremely well in that regard. Also, as part of that effort, there's a relief route study that's going on now, so that we'll be able to connect the 67 and 87, which will be, become part of that Porte du Plains corridor.
Is that, are, is the reliever routes a firm plan at this point, or is that, is that diagram just symbolic of what we need to do, not the actual reliever route?
It's not the actual reliever route at this point, is a, understand it, that has not been finally determined at this point in time, but those are some of the options of the study. of the study. We also have I-14 project that's called the Gulf State Strategic Highway, runs from Fort Benning, Georgia, out to actually Odessa, where it connects 20, and eventually, we'll go to Fort Bliss, Texas. It's sometimes referred to as forts to forts. There has been a little progress in getting this designated at the national level. But with all the infrastructure issues going on now and discussions about that, we're not exactly sure where that stands at this point in time.
Well, it has already been designated as a future interstate, but there's been no monies assigned to it.
That's correct.
And they added two new states.
That's correct. In our business industrial park, I just wanted to point out that we've had sales in that. The past year, about 29.49 acres. That continues to progress. This is an overall plan. It is an AEP quality site, which means that it's shovel-ready to go for new businesses moving in. The roadways are in, utilities. And one of the important things that happened is that we have put in, in our Phase 2.1 infrastructure, we put in 19 acres of drainage, so that any new business moving into that park will not have to have a detention pond. It's all central drainage. And again, it's 19 acres and probably the largest detention pond I've ever seen in my life. This is just an aerial view of the park right now. A lot of what you're going to see in the future, I believe, will relate to distribution and transportation. Allen Transport bought a significant tract. Frito Lay has a distribution center that's been completed and ready to occupy. In our phase that we've been working on 2.2, we've just opened up 118 acres, additional acres for development. What we're working on now would be clearing a lot of that mesquite off of there to make it more sellable. This is a picture of the main detention pond. One of the things that we're doing to keep from erosion is putting in topsoil and seeding those drainage areas right now. Also, there has a traffic circle in it, and we've just installed the concrete in the teardrops leading into that circle. As I said, we will be doing tree and brush clearing. That's all in mesquite right now. We have new signage that will go into the business park. One of the things I want to mention that we've worked on and completed that we're proud of is monumentation to welcome people to San Angelo. And so, this is the working cowboy and the enhancements that have been made to that monument that just basically set by itself and now is a marker to welcome people to San Angelo, a sense of place. And this is 200% monument down by Pinky's Liquor Store in the U-Haul, the sheep with the two lambs. We are about food, fuel, and fiber. A lot of our efforts will also include agriculture in that and getting those products to market. So, just wanted to point that out. Agriculture is $800 million a year, has annual economic yield of $800 million a year. So, we really need to concentrate on that area as well. One of the best things that we've done for them would be to, in our rail port, provide a method of them to cut their transportation costs by as much as 40%. I did want to welcome, also forgot to mention that Michael Looney is with us today in support. They're our main chamber partner and are responsible for the recruitment of businesses. So, thank you, Michael, for for coming today. That's it. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
Lucy?
Yes, I just want to say, Guy and Michael, thank you so much for all your hard work at an industrial park. I know that in the five years, it is amazing. It doesn't even look the same. So, thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, next.
Mayor, next up, we have public safety. We'll start off with the Police Department. We have David here for the presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a short, just three or four slides. This this slide depicts our current staffing levels of June 2021. So, we have 180 authorized sworn, 166 currently employed, 11 cadets starting the police academy July 12. We do have a civil service exam scheduled August 20, and currently, 32 civilian employees. These are our calls for service. Pretty consistent. It's looking like we'll meet 2020's number again. Top call for service, still domestic violence. Current dispatching staffing levels, we have 15 dispatchers of July 1, six in training, six fully trained. How do I get back to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Need back there. Yeah. Let's go to the, go to the next one. Yeah. And these, this is the current crime stats year-to-date. We're showing a 13% decrease. So-
Congratulations.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And that's the, that's all there is to that.
So, I know you're in the process of hiring up to build out what's going to improve. Good luck on, and Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
So, thank you. Big important thing is the reduction in crime. You know, if you read social media and/or the newspaper, you would never think that the actual crime rate has gone down, because that's the stories that always hit the paper. So, one assumes that it's up. And so, it's really good to see that you, based off your policing strategy, that the crime rate's going down. So, good job.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. It's a, social media has has made life good in some ways and bad in some ways. And there's just a lot more awareness when something happens. So, people, people take, you know, they they go by the rumors they see on social media. They think, they get their information and their news there. So, it affects us also.
Looks like you have a great strategy. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I do want to mention that Chief Carter apologizes for not being here today. He had planned to be here last week. Of course, we moved the the deal. So, he did have prior commitment for today, so he couldn't be here today. So-
Well, you did good.
Thank you.
Up next, we do have-
Brian Dunn?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Mike, did you see what he did a while ago? Did you see what he did a while ago, John?
To increase it.
It's not the green one.
Make sure he instructs you. The red button? There you go.
Now, the green one wants?
Just press the green one.
That's all I pushed it, and it jumped. I'm going to go through the-
You pressed too hard, obviously.
Yeah, maybe. Grip's too good. I'm going to go through the major projects that we have completed during this time that council has done for public safety. So, one of the first one was Station 4. It was completed in the fall of 2019. It replaced the fire station that was on Avenue L that was really outdated. And at the current time, we couldn't even buy a fire truck that would fit in it. The new station holds a staff fire truck and an ambulance to cover that southeast portion of the city and county. Staffing for the six frontline ambulances, we hired these personnel in December of 2016 to staff a six frontline ambulance. Personnel completed training, started running that six frontline ambulance. They come out of their training right before Station 4 was open. So, this is the personnel that went to staff that ambulance at Station 4, because prior to that, there was not an ambulance at that station. Safer Staffing hired these personnel in February 2019 to get us to the proper levels of staffing on ladder one and the battalion wagon. That's safer funding, which stands for staffing and fire, for emergency response. The grant runs out in February of '22, and it was a de-escalating grant that paid a portion of that. So, the city, after February of 2022, will be fully responsible for all those costs. In the fall of last year, we completed the Fire Station Alerting System, which had been in the works for several years there. This is what tones the equipment out, tells us where to go. It replaced the Z-tron system that was probably about 30 years old. So, this station was, this system was completed in the fall of last year, and it's working, working very well. 2019, placed Engine 2 and Engine 4. These are usually done through cash flows and the capital, capital. So, we usually replace two trucks within every three-year period. So, we continually work on that. Equipment we got from CARES funding last year during that deal, we got auto-load stretchers for our ambulances, Lucas CPR devices, and EKG monitors. And those devices are on every ambulance at this point in time. That was a lot of dollars' worth of that grant. That's probably nearly a million dollars' worth of equipment on all our ambulances. And that is the projects that we have done over the last few years, that y'all have made public safety a priority.
Thank you. Do I have questions or comments from council? Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
All right. So, I don't think there's any question in terms of confirming our priorities. I believe that council has consistently said the same priorities, and we continually to support the budgeting process for those priorities. So, I don't think that there's anything as it relates to changing those. Yes, Harry?
Just a quick comment. We know we keep, we need to go ahead and work on infrastructure things. But we also know that we need to look at quality of life projects to continue to attract businesses here. And one of those things I'd like to see done is, I'd like to see the strategic planning from Parks and Recs for putting restrooms in these parks. We cannot continue to have these porta-potties there. We've got, we've got to work on that. So, I'd like to see us dedicate some money every year, every other year, to start that process and prioritize them however the Parks and Recs wanted to do it. But I think we need to, we need to do that. Go forward.
I think we have a lot of quality of life issues. That's something that we can put on the table. I'm not sure everyone supports that. And there's other quality of life issues that other council members have as well. So, we can put it out there. It does not mean it has the support. So, just FYI. All right. We're going to follow up on administrative issues. Are there any?
Mayor, one thing that I, this is for my benefit. Since I have been on the council the last four years, I have never had a full presentation, I don't think this council's had a full presentation, on our overall compensation plan. Any problems that it has, any weaknesses that it has, anything the council needs to address. I would like to hear from Brian, an overall presentation on our, on our compensation plan, what things he might need from us, what things he might suggest to us to make our hiring process better, easier, more competitive. So, you know, I would say, Brian, in my, for my taste, I would just give you the floor and let you talk to us what you need to tell us about our compensation plan. If you've got recommendations, make those. If you've got, you know, changes that need to make, just bring those to the forefront, just so I'll understand the the overall compensation plan, where you're trying to go, what you need to do. Thank you.
Other issues? All right, with that, oh, what?
We just wanted to remind everybody that the two regular meetings in July, the first one being on July 8, that's a Thursday. Just want to remind everyone, Thursday, July 8. And then also, the meeting on July 20 is a regular meeting, but it will be held here in the East Mezzanine as opposed to the convention center. Yes.
The thing about-
Yes.
Why is that?
There was a scheduling conflict with civic events.
Okay.
Some sort of conference or something that's going on.
All right. With that, may I have a motion for adjournment? All in favor? None opposed. Motion passes 7-0.